Hello everyone, welcome to this act of worship for Education Sunday. My name is Archdeacon David. As we gather today, we do so giving thanks for the work of education in all of our lives, for the education that we've received, for the educations to come, and particularly, we pray for our schools and all places of learning, for those who teach, for children, young people and adults who learn in places of education. And this year, our theme is a time of change. And what a time of change it's been, very strange times that we've lived through. Some of you will have left one school and gone to another without ever actually going back to the old school to finish, very odd times indeed. But as Christians, what we do know is that we have the promise of the confident hope of Jesus sending His Spirit to be with us, whatever our circumstances, whatever the time we find ourselves in. So as we gather and share in this act of worship, so we pray. Come Holy Spirit, fill the hearts of your faithful people and kindle in us the fire of your love. Amen.
Education Sunday is important for me because it's a reminder of my role in education as a living out, as a calling, a calling from God to use my strengths, my gifts, to make the world a better place through service, creativity and leadership in education. Education Sunday for me is a day of prayer and of celebration, a day to give thanks for those teachers who inspired me and supported me, for my colleagues in the diocese, for the governors who serve our school and for the children in your people for whom our diocesan family of schools are there to nurture and educate. It's important to take time out and say thank you to God for His support, for leading those Christian centres of education through this last year.
Let us pray. Lord God, we come before you now, just as we are, offering you our hearts and lives, confident in the knowledge that wherever we are this morning, you are there with us. As we celebrate today the joy of learning and the gift of education, we thank you Father God for all those who teach, instruct, coach and nurture. May we all listen carefully to your voice this morning and learn more of you and of your love for us. Amen.
So now we come to our time of confession, so let's just take a moment of quiet to think about those things that we need to say sorry to God for. Lord, you know that we love you and we know what you ask us to do. But for those times when we've been too busy, when we've been hard hearted, when we've been lukewarm, we say sorry. Lord, have mercy. Lord, have mercy. Lord, you know our good intentions and we know your will, but hold us back long enough to listen to those in need and to learn from them and to learn of our own need. Where we think we are sent, make us ready to receive. Where we are keen to teach, make us ready to learn. Christ, have mercy. Christ, have mercy. Lord, you know our deepest desires and we know the vision of your kingdom. We bring before you those elements in our lives in need of your transforming power. That which we misuse or neglect, that which we most reluctantly let go of, that which we believe is not good enough, inspire and disturb us to examine our deepest desires. Lord, have mercy. Lord, have mercy. May the God of love bring us back to himself, forgive us our sins and assure us of his eternal love in Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
The reading is taken from Proverbs chapter 22, verses 1 to 9. A good name is more desirable than great riches. To be esteemed is better than silver or gold. Rich and poor have this in common, the Lord is the maker of them all. The prudent see danger and take refuge, but the simple keep going and pay the penalty. Humility is the fear of the Lord, its wages are riches and honour and life. In the paths of the wicked are snares and pitfalls, but those who would preserve life stay far from them. Start children off on the way they should go, and even when they are old, they will not turn from it. The rich rule over the poor, and the borrower is slave to the lender. Whoever sows injustice reaps calamity, and the rod they wield in fury will be broken. The generous will themselves be blessed, for they share their food with the poor. This is the word of the Lord.
Our gospel reading this morning is taken from the book of Luke, chapter 19, verses 1 to 10. Jesus entered Jericho and was passing through. A man was there by the name of Zacchaeus. He was a chief tax collector and was wealthy. He wanted to see who Jesus was, but because he was short, could not see over the crowd. So he ran ahead and climbed a sigamore fig tree to see him, since Jesus was coming that way. When Jesus reached the spot, he looked up and said to him, Zacchaeus, come down immediately, I must stay at your house today. So he came down at once and welcomed him gladly. All the people saw this and began to mutter, he has gone to be the guest of a sinner. But Zacchaeus stood up and said to the Lord, look Lord, here and now, I give half of my possessions to the poor, and if I have cheated anybody out of anything, I will pay back four times the amount. Jesus said to him, today salvation has come to this house, because this man too is a son of Abraham, for the son of man came to seek and to save the lost. This is the gospel of the Lord. Praise to you, O Christ.
Hi, I'm Jack.
And I'm Meg.
And we're the hosts of Bible Podlets.
Bible Podlets is a Bible study and discussion podcast for families to do together.
Now, the Board of Education team asked us to come and tell you about someone in the Bible called Zacchaeus.
But we tell our stories a little bit differently here in Bible Podlets. We do them as news stories.
So here we go for our news story today. Bye.
Welcome to Neighbourhood Watch. I'm Molly Ingleton. Our top story today, Jesus sides with a tax collector in Jericho and outrages the community. Jesus turned heads today when he invited himself to dinner with a sinner in front of a large crowd. Zacchaeus, a notoriously greedy little man, was seen up a tree when Jesus was walking through Jericho, surrounded by a lot of people. When Jesus saw the tax collector crouched in a nearby tree, he told him to come down because he wanted to stay at his house. But Zacchaeus surprised everyone when he said he would give away half of his belongings to the poor and would give people who he cheated four times as much back. We spoke to the people at the scene to see what they had to say.
How can Jesus go and stay with such a sinner as Zacchaeus? Why does he spend so much time with these types of people? It's ridiculous.
How could Jesus forgive such a dirty sinner? Who does he think he is? God?
What a silly thing to do. Zacchaeus is a liar and a thief. He can't be trusted. Don't come running to me when your sandals and belt are missing.
Only time will tell if Zacchaeus will be true to his word and give back to the community he stole from. But on the surface, it looks like he's completely changed his ways. Jesus is continuing to make a big wave everywhere he goes and people are split on his teaching. If he does end up persuading the masses, maybe he can campaign for all those potholes to be filled outside the temple. Because my cartwheel got destroyed the other day and it's just stupid that the council won't do anything about it. I mean, why do we even pay tax if they're not going to maintain the road? I mean...
I wonder whether any of you have been on one of those little outward bound holidays? You know, the schools often go to where they get to do various different activities, adventurous activities. I wonder whether you've done that? And I wonder whether in particular you've ever seen a little piece of apparatus called the Leap of Faith. Fascinating little thing. I've done it myself in the past, but I've got a video for you of the Leap of Faith, but I thought I'd just introduce it a little bit. So Leap of Faith is essentially a telegraph pole that is planted in the soil. It's got some kind of grips on the side of it. It's usually maybe about 10 metres high-ish, thereabouts. And the idea is that a person climbs up the telegraph pole, stands on the top of the telegraph pole. And the bit that's the Leap of Faith is that then they have to jump off. And sometimes they jump off and grab onto a trapeze. Sometimes they jump off and hit a kind of ball in the air. And it is a bit of a nerve wracking experience. And if you don't like heights, it's definitely not one for you. So I've got a little video clip for you of somebody who is doing the Leap of Faith. So if you have a little look here, here we have it, carefully climbing up. You'll notice there's a harness on there as well, so we're all nice and safe. You climb up to what is, can only be described as a tea tray at the top. And the challenge is of course to stand on the tea tray. Now, if you're worried of heights, then that's always going to be something of a challenge just to get to this little step here, where it's just leeching, reaching over the edge, that little moment there to stand up, that's the tricky one, little bit of nervousness. And then you've got to turn around, get onto your own two feet. The hardest bit, I think, of the Leap of Faith is often just standing up on the pole, particularly when it wobbles. Now, we're going to pause the video in just a moment, so we're going to pause it there. Now, my question to you is, will she jump? Will she do the Leap of Faith? Will she do it? What do you think? What do you think? You'll notice that the telegraph pole is wobbling a little bit, knees wobbling a little bit. What do you think? Will she do it? Shall we have a look? Okay, well, let's have a look and see whether the Leap of Faith is successful. And there she goes. Wonderful, makes it. Looks a bit uncomfortable, but oh, what excitement as well, bit of a wave of the hands, clearly a bit of relief of having got off there, having been safe. Just takes a little bit of bottle, I think. You've got to overcome uncertainty, doubt, fear, and you've got to have a little bit of faith, hence the name, the Leap of Faith. Well, the faith in this particular example is faith in what? A rope? A harness? Perhaps faith in the instructor who's talking you through? Perhaps it's faith in the people who built the equipment in the first place, that they have actually done it correctly and that you're not going to land flat on your face. So there is a little bit of faith, needless it's faith in humanity, I suppose. And the whole purpose of that exercise is to build confidence and to try to allow people to challenge those uncertainties, those doubts and those fears. Now, I've got another picture for you. Let me, let me show you this one. This is a picture that's perhaps all too familiar at the moment. This is something that we would see around and I suppose it was an image that I wanted to use that explains some of the uncertainty that people have around at the moment. There is real uncertainty as folks kind of think about COVID-19, what does that mean for me? Am I going to be ill? And perhaps anxious about my future, my job, anxious about my school, anxious about my health, my family. There's a lot of things that can cause us worry. And I think at this particular time, having come out of a lockdown and some of us are still in lockdowns, that anxiety can be raised and we can be a little bit nervous. But we are a people of hope. As Christians, we have faith that is more certain than a rope or a harness or an instructor. We have faith that is certain and steadfast, because it's a faith that is in a steadfast and certain God. God sees us for who we are and still loves us, and that in itself is amazing. God calls us to repent, but also God graciously forgives and seeks to draw us closer to Him. Now, in the story of Zacchaeus, Zacchaeus kind of had taken a position, I think, that many people take in the world in uncertain, uncertain times. If you're not quite sure how things are going to pan out, then there is an adage that seems to be prevalent the world over, which is, look after number one. Sort yourself out, look after yourself, don't worry about anybody else. That is the way forward. Look after number one at all costs. And sometimes it's look after number one and your family, but at all costs. It doesn't matter therefore if somebody else suffers, doesn't matter if you cheat somebody else out of something, as long as it betters your position. Zacchaeus was in that place. He'd trampled on others in order to elevate himself, but he needed a bit of elevating. Maybe this trait was heightened by the fact that he had a lack of height, but he wanted to stand on the shoulders of others, cheat others in order to better himself. And in theory, that should have meant that he felt he was much safer, more secure, he would have felt that he was, you know, in a great place in this uncertain time of Roman occupation. But clearly, he wasn't that confident. Clearly, he wasn't that fulfilled, because something about him must have realised that he wasn't quite complete. So why else would he go and climb a tree in order to see this Jesus character? Well, perhaps he was intrigued, perhaps something had drawn him to the character of Jesus, perhaps he'd seen something that he lacked. But whatever it was, Zacchaeus was drawn to Jesus. Now, I've got some more pictures for you. And I want to show you these pictures and my question to you is, what do you think links these pictures together? So shall we have a little look at them? Here's your first one. These are the best pictures I could find, so hopefully you like this one. It's the first one, it's a boat, a little bit of a lake. Yeah, okay. Next one, so, okay, I think we all know what that one is. That's a dove. So that's the second one. And the third one, ooh, looks nice that. Apparently it's in Finland somewhere. But yeah, okay, that's a pier and a still lake. Okay, so that looks quite good. And okay, now, you're not have to look at this one for a little while. It is the front of a ship. When you first see it, you think, ooh, I'm not entirely sure what that is. See the front of a ship, yeah, it's a ship, and you'll see the chain over the top and that is the anchor. So four pictures there, and I wonder what you think links them? What do you think? So I think that these are all pictures of what Zacchaeus might have been drawn to, what he looked for in Jesus, what we experience in Jesus. So let's go and look at those pictures again and see if you can see my train of thought, which is the challenge on a good day. So the first one is the boat, and the boat in that murky darkness. And the boat is a symbol of assurance there, because notice the light around the boat amongst the darkness, it's as if it's saying, you know, come to me, I am safety in this dark and gloomy space. I am, I can assure you of your safety, a little kind of light in the darkness. So assurance. The dove, while we often know the dove as a symbol of peace, but also of a symbol of the Holy Spirit. And within Jesus, we find that ultimate peace given through the Holy Spirit that lives in us, we find that deep peace. So something else perhaps that Zacchaeus was looking for in the peace. Now, if you look at the dock, well, the dock is just simply stillness. What a great picture of stillness that is. And a reminder that Jesus is the still small voice within the storm. And then finally, the ship, and the ship that is an anchor. And that's a good reminder that Jesus is our security and a firm connection to God through Him. So those are the four pictures, and hopefully you can kind of see the train of thought. And those are the things that brought perhaps Zacchaeus to see Jesus, but also they're things that we can find as a real comfort in times of uncertainty. So more than ever, we perhaps need the assurance that we find in Jesus, the peace that we find in Jesus, the stillness that we find in Jesus, and the security that we find in Jesus. We're drawn to God and changed by Him if we allow ourselves to be. Interestingly, lockdowns brought some great characteristics. I mean, there've been some dark times and some difficult times, but actually, some of the things that have been real joys have been stories of hope, stories of generosity, stories of giving, stories that have kind of given a hint of a glimpse of God in our world, even with people who are of no faith, who have done great things and inspired others. And I see that as a God in action in others in our world. I see that the actions of God taking place. And so I think it's really good to see in the midst of such difficulty that God is breaking through. And I think increasingly, we've seen people open to understanding more of God and asking questions about their place in the world and perhaps being more open and receptive to what God might do for them. Got another picture for you. Have a look at this one. What do you think this is? You might need some help if you're perhaps one of the older folk in our world who might not know what this is. You might need to ask somebody a bit younger. Have a think, what do you think? It's a toy, definitely a toy, but what else is it? What do you think? Well, it is a transformer, not as you might be thinking, something that changes electrical current. No, it is a transformer. It is, starts as one thing, she's used a car or a lorry, and they're transformed into something much more powerful to save the world. If you've not looked at them, have a look, some great films and some not so great films. Anyway, as Christians, we can be catalysts of change in the world. We can be transformers. Zacchaeus meets Jesus and he finds that peace, he finds that stillness, he finds that security and that assurance, and he is transformed. In fact, he's transformed drastically, significantly, so much so that the people around don't quite get it. They don't understand how this can all change. In fact, some of them doubt that he's changed, and yet his generosity demonstrates that. So it's quite significant, isn't it, that that change is there? And through that change, that dramatic change, he's And through that change, that dramatic change, he starts to change others. So he's transformed in himself and in turn he seeks to transform others. And that's what we're called to be. We're called to be transformers, not robots in disguise, but we're transformed, called to be transformers who are people transformed by God and therefore can transform others. So I've got another picture for you. Sorry, it's like death by pictures. Here's another one. What's that a picture of? Well, I think you've all got it pretty clear. It is a potter's wheel and we can see the hands of the potter shaping that vessel, crafting it and honing it. And to be transformed, we need to allow God to be that potter in our lives. We need to allow God to mould us and allow ourselves to be transformed. We still have worries, we still have doubts. We're human, we're bound to have those and we have those fears as well. But we can lay them before God because we are a people of God and we can lay them before Him. We can come to Him in prayer and we can receive His blessings. And that is transformational for us. We can also be transformed through prayer, spending time with God, through reading Scripture, through worship together, through the Feast of the Eucharist, through fellowship with others. And in all of those things, we start to be transformed. We need to allow God to shape us, to change us, to mould us, to transform our lives. And it's a piece of work that takes time. We can't just, not once for all. We get this feeling with Zacchaeus that it kind of all happened in the blink of an eye and then that was it. But no, it's not like that. It's a discipleship journey. We need to be transformed and shaped over time. So then, how does that then relate to the reading in Proverbs that we had? Well, when you look at that reading in Proverbs, there's a wonderful verse in there of verse 22, verse six of chapter 21 to, 'Train up a child in the way they should go, and when they are old they will not depart from it.' There is a kind of a mandate for us to not only transform ourselves, but to be helping children to transform themselves, helping children to connect with God, to be transformed and in turn to be transformers of today and of the future. When we talk to children and I see them in schools and I see them around in churches, sometimes what they say can be quite challenging. There can be a deep rooted faith that actually questions sometimes the adult brain's interpretation of things. And sometimes the simplest grasp of God in their lives is something that we can all learn from. So children can be transformed and they can transform others of any generation. And we have a duty to focus on our children and our young people to help them to be transformed and in turn for them to transform others. Our children have experienced a difficult time, strange time, I think, in our world. And for them, I suppose this strange time of COVID makes up a significant percentage of the time that they've been alive. For us, well, for me, you know, it's a small percentage of my life so far. But for many children, it's quite a significant chunk. And there's anxieties and fears that go with that. So we can help them to find that assurance, that peace, the stillness and security that is found in Jesus. And our job is to guide and nurture them in that, to show them how they can be moulded by God so that they too can transform others. So Zacchaeus gives us a mandate. And what a significant one it is to allow ourselves to be transformed so that we too can transform others, to encourage and nurture the young to be transformed so that they can transform others. We don't know what happened to Zacchaeus after that encounter with Jesus, so we don't know what he did. But it's safe to assume that that encounter had a long lasting effect. And we can't know the lives that were influenced by Zacchaeus by sharing his story of his meeting with Jesus, by people asking about this person who seemed to be utterly transformed and was having a positive impact on society, whereas previously they'd had a negative impact on society. And so that's our role to kind of mirror Zacchaeus and to be people who are influencers, who can enforce change, who can show people who this person of Jesus is and how Jesus has a positive impact on our lives and can have a positive impact on theirs. So what's my message to you? Well, it's simple. Be a Zacchaeus, no matter how old you are. Take a leap of faith with Jesus and seek to transform.
My name's Sarah and I'm your Diocesan Children's Wake Advisor. For the past five years, I have been sharing creative prayer ideas on our social media pages every day in June to run alongside the National Toddler Group Month of Prayer. And you can find all of these ideas collated into handy booklets on our website. Now, although these ideas were shared with under fives in mind, they can be used by people of all ages. So we're going to be using some of them as part of our time of intercession now.
Have you noticed how the pieces of a jigsaw are all different? No two pieces of a puzzle are the same, but each piece is important to complete the puzzle. This is the same with people. We're all different, but all important. As we examine these pieces of a jigsaw puzzle, we are going to pray for teachers, children and their parents. Dear Lord, we pray for our teachers and school staff. We thank you for their gifts and talents and everything they contribute to our schools. We pray for all the children who have recently returned to school. Help them to settle in and show them how to celebrate their differences and work together as a team. We pray for parents. Show them how best to support their children and their school community as they journey through the school year together. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
We're going to use bubbles to pray to God about worries. The start of turn can be a worrying time. As we blow the bubbles, we're going to pray about some of those worries. As the bubbles pop or fly away, we'll give the rose to God. These are some of our worries about going back to school, changing school or class, meeting new friends or teachers, coronavirus, schoolwork getting more difficult, homework. Father God, as we tell you our worries, give us peace. Amen.
Let us pray for our homes and our families there and give thanks for the safety and the warmth we have in our homes. Let's pray as well for our schools, for the people that we meet at school and our teachers and pray for our learning together. Let us pray as well for the time that we spend with our friends playing and having fun. Now let's join together in the Lord's Prayer, which was recorded by a number of head teachers for the Year Six Leave of Service last year.
Our Father, who art in heaven, thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven.
Give us this day our daily bread,
and forgive us our trespasses,
as we forgive those who trespass against us,
lead us not into temptation,
but deliver us from evil,
the Lord is the King of it,
the power and the glory,
forever and ever.
Amen.
That just leaves me to say thank you for joining us for worship this morning. It's been great to have you along with us. We'd also like to thank you for the support you give us in the Board of Education for our work with children, young people and our schools. Can we take this opportunity to encourage you and ask you to pray for us as we continue to seek to step out in our mission and vision for that work that we are doing? And also to check out our resources and our training and to have a look at what we have to offer. And if it isn't for you, maybe prayerfully consider who it might be a blessing to and who might get something from that. And lastly, let me just say thank you for loving, caring for, investing in children, young people across our county, across our country. Thank you for praying for them and that most of all that we pray that they would become followers of Jesus, that our lives be transformed by the love that they find in Him. Thank you so much. We're going to join together and sing in Christ alone.
In Christ alone, my hope is found. He is my light, my strength, my song. This cornerstone, this solid ground, firm through the fiercest drought and storm. What heights of love, what depths of peace? When fears are spilled, when striving cease, my comforter, my all in all, here in the love of Christ I stand. In Christ alone, who took on flesh, the furnace of God in helpless faith, this gift of love and righteousness, scorned by the ones he came to save, till on that cross as Jesus died, the wrath of God was satisfied, for every sin on him was laid, here in the death of Christ I live. There in the ground his body lay, light of the world by darkness slain, then bursting forth in glorious day, upon the grave he rose again. And as he stands in victory, sins curse hath lost its grip on me, for I am his and he is mine, brought with the precious blood of Christ. No guilt in life, no fear in death, this is the power of Christ in me. From life's first cry to final breath, Jesus commands my destiny. No power of hell, no scheme of man can ever block me from his hand, till he returns or calls me home. Here in the power of Christ I'll stand. No power of hell, no scheme of man can ever block me from his hand, till he returns or calls me home. Here in the power of Christ I'll stand.
The Spirit of Truth leads you into all truth. Give you grace to confess that Jesus Christ is Lord, to the glory of God the Father and the blessing of God Almighty, the Father, the Son and the Holy Spirit. Be with you all today and always. Amen.